President Mike Gilpin, he's resting his vocal cords. At this time, I'd like you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, the 27th of October 2017 at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant at 34-468 Tea Time Circle, Sebring. Please silence your cell phones or turn them off, please. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Submove.
Board comment? Public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin, by show of hand, for the record, he raised his hand.
Action agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the action agenda?
Submove.
Public hearing, Resolution Number 2017-10, 13-56, a resolution of Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District to adopt a new policy for control of backflow and crossconnections for the commercial properties and establish a new commercial rate. Board discussion?
We need a motion.
You need a motion, okay, I'm sorry. Motion to approve?
Submove.
Second.
Real quick, after the packets went out, we realized we had left out a small portion of the agenda, I mean, the resolution of the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th whereas clause that discusses the new $10 per month rate. This is only going to be for water services of 2 inches and under, which will affect, you know, 99% of the district, but there are five water customers that have larger than 2-inch service, and this will not, this change will not affect them.
Okay. Tanya, could you give the audience a brief description of what this is about?
Yes, this resolution today, we have a, we have commercial customer, water utility commercial customers in the district, and the, these customers have what we call backflow preventers on the meter, or on the outside of the meter. What it does is the preventer prevents any toxins or chemicals or whatnot to go back into our, our water system. There is a requirement that these customers have testing done on an annual basis. We were charging each commercial customer $40 a month for the testing, and when the failure had occurred on the backflow, it was the responsibility of the customer to fix it.
Okay.
And what we're recommending today is a $10 charge for all those customers that have a 2-inch meter or less per month, so that the testing will occur, and then also the repair. We will take care of the repair for all of the, the backflows that were, were failed.
Board discussion?
Omar, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I think you pretty much mentioned it pretty good. The fee right now currently is only $40 for the testing. Like I said, it's the owner's responsibility to really make sure it's complying, and our initial goal with this, we sat down with Mike and we looked at, you know, our utility personnel as well, to see if it was being effective, and it really wasn't. We found out that there was about 40 commercial units that had failed meters, and, you know, they weren't doing anything about, about the, about the problem. So, the current policy really didn't have anything that allowed us to address it within a certain timeframe. There wasn't a, you know, two-week window where they had to get it fixed, or 30 days. So, we've made some revisions of the plan. We're actually requesting the board adopt the new plan and adopt that new program management, where we're taking the responsibility now to make sure that they are all complying, and that way it eliminates any exposure to, you know, possible contamination to the water system.
Okay. I do have a que, you have a question? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the people that are delinquent right now, how are we handling them?
So, we are going to notify, we have a list of all the ones that have failed. We're going to make communications with each one of those individually. We're going to require them to become compliant before they begin this process. So, we're not going to take the responsibility of fixing out of pocket, they're going to have to come out. They can either go through us, we have established rates with HydroCorp, who's in charge of managing this program, or they can do it with their own, they can go out and find their own vendors, but they have to become compliant within 30 days. We're going to send them a notice, we're going to go out and visit with them each individually to make sure they become compliant before they start this program.
And that was the same question I had?
Yeah, we notified all the commercial units two months in advance, knowing that this was coming down the road. We wanted to get some feedback from all the commercial properties. A couple of them did reach out and ask questions on, see if, you know, just what it was about, just to get an understanding, but no one really was opposed to it. I think a lot of them don't have the time, or don't have the time to go fi, find a vendor and get quotes, or, you know, take care of that repair. It's just not one of their top priorities, but for the district, it is a priority. So, us taking it over, I think it's going to be a big help for them and for the district as a whole.
And they could contract with the district to do that fix, is what you're saying?
Going forward with the new program? The delinquent ones, yes. We have a better rate than they would get on their own. HydroCorp has done that and met with each vendor and got certain rates for testing and repairs and maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Public comment?
Bill Norcross, resident. Just a quick question, this has nothing to do with commercial property, but does it, years ago, a homeowner was required to have backflow, and is that still in effect now? I mean, you guys probably don't remember that, but I do have it on several.
Correct, and I believe most residents do have some sort of backflow prevention device.
Well, I understand that.
DEP right now does not require any mandatory annual testing like it does for commercial units. It's something that's been discussed often with the Florida Code and DEP, but it's never been pushed down a lot, down where we have to do any testing. But you, most residents do have some sort of device on their property.
Well, that was kind of an implied thing, that we had to have it because of some incident where the water, bad water got mixed up with the good.
Correct, correct.
And the homeowner had a problem. All right, thank you.
Good morning.
Shirley Sherman-Alegre. So, people who haven't complied, I understand that there really wasn't anything in place for them to be able to mandatorily comply? Do we have something if this isn't done now within 30 days on those commercial properties who failed?
Correct, so now the new plan, we've created letters and notices that we will use as examples or exhibits inside the plan document, so as soon as we get a notification, if we go with this plan, there won't, there won't be a need to, there won't be a compliance issue, because we're going to make sure it's compliant at all times. If we decide not to go with this plan, then our backup option is for us to notify them and give them a certain timeframe to provide compliance. So, now we have letters, we have notices, we have timeframes where they're going to be responsible to comply within that timeframe, or we will shut their water off until they become compliant. You know, I think the reason we weighed those options out and we decided to go down this road is because we really don't want to get into, you know, let's say, one of the medical offices misses that 30-day timeframe, we really don't want to go out there and shut their water off. We'd rather go ahead and just get it fixed, charge them for it, and be done with it, so.
Shirley's question, but they're aware that we would shut the water off?
Correct, the new plan has that wording in there.
Any further comment? Chrissy, roll call, please.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
President Gilpin, by show of hand, for the record, he raised his hand.
Resolution Number 2017-10, 13-57, a resolution of Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District to purchase a second rough mower pull behind attachment for the truck from TriMax Mowing Systems pursuant to their RFP response 17-06, at 10% discount for a rate of $30,426. Motion to approve?
Submove.
Second.
Bill Jackson, resident. Why do we need a second one? Someone justify it.
We have, you want me to, Andy, you want to answer that, or you want me to answer it? Or Raymond? I didn't see him there, okay.
We currently have 215 acres.
Ramon, could you move into the mic and say?
I don't know.
State your name.
Yeah, we can pull it out.
Well, we currently have 215 acres of turf. One more only covers 10 acres an hour, and our rough falls behind this time of the year. And so, even with the disaster events that we have had, we've been able to maintain the rough, a little slower than we'd like to, but a second mower will certainly help us maintain our rough to where it should be, creating a more enjoyable golfing experience.
But you've been able to accomplish it without that mower? The down?
Yes, but it's also been having employees here for nine, 10 hours, Monday through Sunday.
Has anyone got lost in the rough? Skip.
Can I make a comment? Andy Kestling, head golf professional, we need the second mower to be able to keep the rough heights where they need to be without them getting substantially overgrown, so that, that's why we're purchasing the new mower.
Was the downside not having a rough, the second one?
You know, for the golfer not being able to find their ball, to be able to hit it out of the rough, to enjoy the game, to, you know, to the experience that we're looking to provide for the golfer.
Enjoy the game. I don't even want to stand in the way of enjoying the game. Thank you. No.
Any further public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Gilpin, by show of hand, for the record, he raised his hand.
Resolution 2017-10, 13-58, a resolution of Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District, again requesting the Board of the County Commissioners Highlands County, Florida, to amend the Enabling Act of the Sunning Lakes of Sebring Improvement District by amending Sections 9-102, 9-103, 9-104, and 9-015, to amend the minimum maintenance standards, the enforcement of minimum maintenance standards, nuisance abatement, and civil citations. A motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
A little background on this, we, this has previously come before the board. The, the process that we've been through to get to this point is we had originally hired a consultant attorney who's, you know, basically, that, all he does is work on code, is Mr. Bob Prit.
Prit.
Prit. And he came up with a, you know, a version of what he wanted, or the recommended changes that he would, you know, for us to bring, take to the county. That version was delivered to Ross Macbeth's office, and he made, you know, his revisions, and then we came back to, to our office, and we tried to put together a, basically, what we would consider the final draft. Well, in the, the translation from those different, you know, reviews, there was something lost in translation, and when we, the version that we sent to the county on the, with the prior resolution, there were some issues that Mr. Macbeth had with the wording. So, that has now been resolved. This version that is before you now has, should have the changes that everybody was, you know, was requesting and happy with, so, but, you know, there's, there's a new board now, so if there's any other issues that you have, we can, this is our, basically our last chance before, because approve, once we approve this, it's going to go to the county for adoption.
Board discussion?
I have a concern with taking the length of boats approved from 18 feet to 12, primarily because most fishing boats are somewhere between 15 and 18 feet, so by taking it to 12, you basically eliminate everything except for really small stuff, these little plastic things. You could wind up with a 12-foot boat that looks a whole lot worse than an 18. If we're trying to abate nuisance, I'm not sure we're getting it done. It should, in my opinion, at least, be somewhere around 18 or none, one of the two.
This is page six.
Mm-hmm.
Four, A, page six.
I think it was 18 feet. I mean, a lot of places are, your deed restrictions say you can't have a boat, period. I guess I don't see the difference between a 12 and an 18, other than a 12 is not useful at all to anybody.
Dan, can I ask you a question? In terms of that section of recreational vehicles, and that, are you only concerned about the 12 feet or less, or are you concerned about the rest of the wording, such as no more than four feet, or the driveway prepared surface, or, and/or a utility trailer? Because at this current time, I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but you can have both a utility trailer and a boat, so is it just the, the 12 feet versus the 18 feet that you're concerned with?
That's the only thing, you know, basically, when you stick a boat on a trailer, it's going to be more than four feet high as well, so I'm not sure whether that applies or not, if it's just a four-foot trailer issue. It's a little bit fuzzy.
Yeah, the current ordinance states that you can have a boat and a trailer currently. This change will allow you to have a boat or a trailer, this change, and then also that reduces the size of the boat as well, so that's.
My question would be, does this have to go back, or can we make the amendment? If we decided to go with an 18-foot boat, can we remain, can the rest of the wording remain the same and pass this resolution?
Absolutely.
Do we want to make a motion to amend?
That's what it would take, a motion to amend the wording back to 18 feet.
I would make a motion to amend the wording back to 18 feet.
Yeah, I'll second.
Chrissy, we'll have to take a.
Yeah, public comment.
Public comment, please.
Tom Coste, resident. Do I understand it that if a person has a boat, and they move it around with a trailer, they're going to have to take the boat off the trailer and put it on the ground, or on the driveway surface, and take the trailer somewhere else, because they can't have both a boat and a trailer?
No, it's a utility trailer.
It's a utility trailer.
You can't use a utility trailer for your boat.
I have to look at the, I think that a boat sits on a trailer. I don't know that it's specifically called a utility trailer. A utility trailer, to me, is a, is a trailer which has a housing that is, you know, has the clothes that contain tools, lawn mowers, you know, things of that nature. That's a utility.
Doesn't say that in the resolution, or in the ordinance, doesn't. My concern is this, we've got, we've got, counting, well, I guess we'll leave Tanglewood out, but we've got over 2,500 homes in Sunning Lake, and we've got eight or 9,000 property owners that have bought property here based on the restrictions that were in place over the last 30 or 40 years. And now we're tightening them. And I think it's a quality of life thing, I think people moved here because of what they found when they came here, they bought property. There's a lot of empty lots that people have been paying assessments on, assuming that the restrictions that were in place when they bought are still going to stay in place. Most of the discussion that I can recall, when we went through this over past meetings, was, came from people who didn't want this type of thing visible from the golf course, and I can understand that. But I think we're talking about district-wide now, and this is, this is going to drastically affect some people's plans. And I think it's not very resident-friendly, thank you.
Bill Jackson. Just for my information, I guess I'm just an ignorant homeowner, can I get an explanation of minimum maintenance standards, nuisance abatement, and civil citations? Maybe we can have the head of code enforcement explain that to us. What would be the differences in that? What would that entail?
Can, where were you at on, on this, Bill? What part?
Reservoir end. It says to amend the minimum maintenance standards, the enforcement of minimum maintenance standards, nuisance abatement, and civil citations.
Okay, you're referring to the general resolution?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you were referring to.
What does that mean?
I thought you were referring to a particular section here.
Well, the last pair, lessons, the resolution.
We're talking about the amendment at this point in time to, on page six, Section 4, we're talking about an amendment to the length of a boat?
Well, I know.
And that, I think that's.
I knew that one. That one was, but then they also have enforcement of minimum maintenance standards. What are minimum maintenance standards? And nuisance abatement, what does that mean? I'm just trying to find out what these things mean.
They're, they're all defined, they're all defined in the code.
And you have a copy of the code in here?
Oh, there's, yeah, it's attached as an exhibit to the, what's it called? It's not, I'm sorry, it's not there on the, it's not part of the, of the agenda.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
It's all available online.
Yeah, I'll look through this and talk about it later.
Any further public comment? Okay, so we have to make a motion to amend this?
You made the motion, you're voting now on the amendment from 12 back to 18 feet.
Okay. Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
No.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Gilpin, by show of hand, for the record, he raised his hand.
All right, we'll make that change before it goes to the county.
Okay.
Just one other question, when this thing finally gets approved by the county, how are we going to enforce this, and who's going to take care of it, and, let's, we'll start with that.
Maybe that's probably a question for.
Mike?
Mike.
That's Mike. Yeah, code enforcement will handle it. Right now, it's at 18 now, so it's not going to really change much for code enforcement on that, that part of it, so there's not really a change in, in the size.
Okay, so code enforcement will take care of it?
Which they always have, you know, I mean, we cite, probably 50 a year, that people have illegal, illegal boats and stuff, and the areas where they park also, so.
Any further board comment? Add-on items?
No, no, we need to do, now we're going to have a public discussion on the, this, as amended, so we're going to take a second vote now to approve all of these changes with the 18-foot amendment. We need a public comment.
Public comment on the amendment, then?
Tom Coste, just for clarification and my foggy memory, have we arrived at a minimum 1,400, I'm sorry, 1,600 square foot house for all future houses built within the district of Sunning Lake?
No. That, that's no part of this.
No.
That's not a part of this, it's going to the county?
Correct, that is, it is not a part of this.
So, they got, see, that got removed in a recent, the previous?
Well, it was never part of this. This has all been just code enforcement. The, the, the changes to the, to the zoning that you're talking about, we have.
I'm not talking about zoning, I'm talking about Sections 100 through 106 of the county code, which is Sunning Lakes, which, where, where did all the discussion come from about minimum 2,000 square foot house on a golf course and 1,600 square foot?
That's all, those were going to be requested zoning changes.
Zoning changes, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin, by show of hand, for the record, he raised his hand.
Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
Andy, you have anything?
Andy?
Okay.
Andy Kestling, head golf pro here at Sunning Lake Golf Club. Just wanted to give the board an update on our Deer Run golf course. As everyone knows, the water table's been very high, and every time we get a little bit of rain, the front nine of Deer Run, holes three, four, and five in particular, become somewhat unplayable, so we're still going to keep the front nine of Deer Run closed. The plan for tomorrow is to open the back nine and play it twice. The back nine is, is really dry. I believe they're finishing up a lot of the tree removal and debris removal out there, so as of tomorrow, we will have the back nine open, and it's obviously a, a moving target. If we don't get any rain, and as soon as we are comfortable with opening Deer Run to the point to where we're not going to incur, you know, a ton of damage, golf cart damage, then we will open all of Deer Run and, you know, keep our fingers crossed. Hopefully, when we get to that point, we'll be able to keep both Turtle Run and Deer Run open for the remainder, so, that's kind of been a, a moving target for me over the last couple of weeks with, whether we're getting rain or not, but that is the plan. As of tomorrow, we'll have 27 holes open for tomorrow. Membership, we are currently going through our renewal process. As of today, I ran some numbers, we're about 12,000 behind where we were at this point last year. The one unknown is the three- and five-month memberships, which, as you guys know, will be coming in here over the next few months, so we'll be able to give a really solid report on our membership revenue. I would say by mid-January, we should have all of our seasonal members will be here, and we'll have all that revenue accounted for, so up until that time, we won't know for sure, but we are anticipating somewhat of a downward trend in, in some of the membership To a good note, our free membership program, we, we've had the first 13 on our free membership program, eight out of those 13 that have expired have renewed to become a full membership. We've got one other that was set to expire here at the end of this month, and he's already renewed, so that would make nine out of 14, so the free membership program is, you know, it seems like it's gaining some traction, and I'm glad to see that we're continuing that. So, that's all I've got on the golf side of that. You know, we're currently still working on the pump, Raymond, we've still got some electrical issues on the pump on Turtle Run, that we're working on that today, but that is all I have for the golf side. Thank you.
Board comment?
Yeah, just a question, 15 green on, on deer is okay?
Yeah, 15, 15 green is, is going to be playable. That is growing in pretty well, all the sodded areas, you know, they're, they're looking better, hopefully here, you know, over the next month or so, those will continue to, to look better, but 15 looks good and will be playable.
What about the, the front of 17, we're in front of the green, what's going on? What are we doing there?
Concerning the drainage?
Yeah.
Raymond, can you speak to, can you speak to the front of 17?
We went, we went back in there.
You're good, you're good.
Oh, okay. We went back in there, and dislodged a, a, a drainage pipe that was clogged up, and so now it, it is draining, it is draining a lot better. We're, we're still going to put in some French drains just to run the sides of it out, because it's draining all towards the front of the approach, and so we're going to tie in from the front of the approach and run out to the sides over where there's, where the overflow. over where there's, where the overflow bank is and also over towards the retention area and between the pine trees there. And, and that should, that should improve that area a whole lot.
Thank you.
That we're required to get up some more than to lay that down, required to get up the-
Yes, but not, not as, not as extent as, as, as we did that, that first time. It'll be more of a trench.
Thanks, Ramon.
You're welcome.
Andy, I do have any other questions?
I had a question, is when, we're supposed to have a workshop with the Casper people. Do you have any idea when that's going to be?
I received an email this morning from Ron Wonderly and he is asking if November eighth, on a Wednesday morning at ten AM would be an appropriate time for that workshop. If it is, then we would go ahead and advertise that in the newspaper. Does any of the supervisors have a conflict with November eighth? Wednesday? Or, or Thursday was another option. Those are the two days that I was given. Ten AM?
Is it good for everybody?
November eighth?
November eighth, huh?
Okay.
Said it and advertise it if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, I will do that.
Thank you. I do have a question for Andy. You mentioned that we're roughly twelve thousand behind in terms of revenue. And I know there's sometimes there's a correlation between revenue and total numbers of members, but can you give me that relationship? Are we down actually members or are we just down revenue for change because of changes in the types of memberships people might have?
Some of that would be due to, you know, our full going to eighty or eighty going to eighty-five. I don't have those numbers as of how many we have for those. I believe it was in the range of, you know, four to five so far that we're going from full, you know, and getting older to eighty. The twelve thousand down is, it's, it's hard to gauge because some members may have not renewed, they're just coming on down here in the next month and will renew, whereas they may have done it sooner last year. So the twelve thousand number, I wouldn't put too much weight on that. I do know, we, we do know several member, full memberships, family and single, that they have let us know that they are not going to rejoin. I'm not sure exactly what that number is, but it would seem anywhere from that, you know, five to ten range number. So we do feel that our membership number is going to be down this year, as it has trended in that fashion here, I believe over the last couple of years. So, you know, some of it's due to the age, some of it's due to, you know, financial situations for some of our full members that have been members for years and just aren't going to be able to do it this year. Some of that could be due to the hurricane. But, you know, that's kind of where we stand, Mark, with the membership.
Another question, just tomorrow is the VFW, the forty-three, their tournament?
Yes, sir.
And that's the one that will be playing on Deer?
That, that'll be played on Turtle, Turtle Run tomorrow at eight thirty.
Oh, that's not the backside of Deer?
No, sir.
So the backside of Deer, you're opening up to the members?
We'll have, we'll have, correct, yes. Tomorrow morning, we've got, you know, we've got the Brown group and the Crick group that will play at eight o'clock in the morning. Other than that, we really don't have anything booked on Deer.
Okay.
And then hopefully, you know, I'm going to ride the golf course today. Obviously, we didn't get any rain yesterday, but, you know, looking at the forecast for the next seven days, it looks like we're going to get some rain. So I'm, I'm comfortable with opening the backside and then as soon as we can open the front, it's going to be great to get, you know, back to eighteen holes. But tomorrow, we do have the tournament out on Turtle Run and then we've got our couples groups going out after that. Should be around one o'clock. And then just those morning groups that are on Deer tomorrow.
Thank you. Any further comment?
What about the pump on number eight Deer?
Pump on eight?
Or, I'm sorry, number eight Turtle?
Turtle, yeah.
Don't you name Ramon? I know everybody knows you, but the Rock Kid?
Oh, okay. Ramon Perez Superintendent. The pump on number eight will be sliding back in there. We've got, we've ordered the wire for it. Apparently, the, the electric line that runs to it got, got hit or just got fried underneath. We thought it had taken out the pump motor itself, but it didn't. So we're, we should be installing that back in next week and hopefully taking those ropes away and getting that area back where it's not so unsightly.
Any further board discussion?
Ramon, just for clarification, the electricity outage that we had on Tuesday?
Yes.
It, I mean, residents, the district office, everybody was without electricity, including the Turtle Run pump. Duke Energy was out here yesterday?
Yes.
We thought it was fixed and then it was down again. Is that correct this morning?
That's correct.
Okay, so just to clarify, we are having some electrical issues there. I thought, you know, Duke Energy was out here to fix the transformer, but obviously they're having some more problems than what they thought.
Right, another, another problem showed up and it controls, it controls the holes five through eighteen. So we currently don't have any electricity there. So we're here at night watering while, while we get it back up.
Hopefully today, is that right?
I'm praying that.
Hopefully today, okay.
Thank you, Ramon. Public comment?
Bill North, press resident, this is pertaining to the golf course. I want to publicly thank all the members that came out for the hurricane cleanup for two days that really assisted the, the workers here in their fine job of cleaning up the golf course. It's really appreciated and we, we understand it's, we lost probably about a hundred trees out there and I hope they're covered by FEMA and some of the, the other stuff and cleanup and removal. I really want to thank everybody for doing that. We do have a couple complaints naturally, and I think it stems from me personally, is I hope that it's addressed, the red stake area. I guess this is coming up, but you're going to be able to get together with a committee and, and get that squared away because I think some areas can be staked, but then again, you know, you say a general thing and then everybody takes every hole. So it has to be clearly defined so everybody plays the same game. Okay? And the same rules. Also, the other complaint is the, the rough has been tough out there and it's tough on rainy conditions, it's tough on hurricane conditions and everything else. And I just think, I played yesterday and it looked like Turtle was cut recently and it's too high. Can we just assess this so we could, we had a search for several balls just off the fairway in the rough? Just cut it down, try another half inch. Another half inch, maybe? Cut the rough?
Say another three weeks and then you'll say, where's the rough gone?
Where's the rough gone? Well, I hope so. It'll help everybody's game and searching for balls. And I think it's very difficult for visitors to enjoy the game if they're looking and looking and looking. So appreciate if that could be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Tom Coste, I don't know if this is the right time for this or not. It's very apparent in Manor Hill that storm debris is being dumped in Manor Hill.
Can you save that for the general comments at the end?
Sure.
Thank you.
My understanding is that it's been seen that a lot of it's coming from the golf course. And the driver indicated he was told to dump it there. And I don't know if that was by golf.
Let's address that at the end.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I should say, general, general counsel, Dave?
Nothing really big to report. Foreclosures are moving along and same with the litigation report, an update on Ayala. There was a little bit of some motion back and forth and the judge, I mean, the, the second DCA made a decision about granting or accepting a late filed motion, but other than that, it's just motion practice. So I'll be impressed if we have a decision by the end of the year, unfortunately.
Board comment?
Yeah, still, I'd say that we're still waiting for the, all the appeal stuff is filed. We're waiting on the second DCA to make a decision. And that could be, I'd say if it's by the end of the year, I'll be amazed.
Okay, so I have to ask the question. This has been going on for years and years and years. We're in six figures now. What, what is it that, why can't we get this resolved? I mean, I realize it keeps going through an appeal process.
Exactly.
What is it going to take to speed up this process?
Your guess is as good as mine when it comes to the second DCA. I mean, it's, they've had it since-
Two thousand and twelve, I think.
No, 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 they've only had the appeal, let's see, since back in July? Sorry, June. The June, the appeal was filed in June. The, our circuit court, Judge Raden made a decision on the, basically it was a motion to dismiss and then we were trying to get the district out of it completely. The judge granted it in part but denied it in part based on the, my understanding, the, the litigation team felt that the case law is very clear and that we should have gotten a full dismissal. And so they chose to appeal the judge's decision not to dismiss all counts. So that's now, that was sent to the second DCA in June. Here we are in October, it's been four months. And like I say, everything that they need, the briefs have been filed, everything that they need to make a decision is in their hands, but that just happened back in, I believe it was late August. They got, yeah, late August, they got everything they needed. So realistically, they're not going to give a decision, you know, within a month and everything that I am hearing is four to six months to get a decision once they have everything. So if we're lucky, you know, it could be four months, we'll have it by the end of this year, but I think beginning of next year is more realistic.
Thank you. General managers' report?
Tanya Kennedy, general manager. I'd like Omar to give a brief update on Turtle Run, the debris on Turtle Run. We have, we are still assessing the damage on Turtle Run in the scrub jay areas. And what I mean by that is that to be FEMA reimbursed, the trees have to meet a certain criteria. We are, haven't finished that assessment yet and we are marking the trees that meet FEMA reimbursement and then we are also marking other trees. But I'd like Omar to speak to that.
So correct. As Andy mentioned and Tanya as well, Deer Run, they're finishing up today. We've gone out, we've done the same assessment. We've counted every single tree that's down or needs to be taken out. We've marked them as eligible for FEMA reimbursement or non-eligible. We're going to start doing that as well on, you know, Turtle Run, even the front nine of Deer, just off the sides, even the scrub jay habitat, just everything that needs to be out there and be addressed. We're going to come back and we expect to have this for the next meeting where we can give you guys, to give the board a figure on how many non-eligible trees are out there, what the cost we expect, so the board can make a decision, should we go ahead and address those trees, should we leave them? The FEMA reimbursement, we're just going to go ahead and take care of them and hope that we get reimbursed for those. So those won't, we won't need to make a call on those, but the ones that are non-eligible are the ones that we're really going to need to, you know, I don't know if it's fifty trees, I don't know if it's ten. We're going through that assessment process now and we'll come back at the next board meeting with the figures and how many trees so you guys can make a decision on, do you want to address those areas or not?
Those trees that we're referring to, those are, have they do with the size of the canopy?
Correct, so they just, there's a certain criteria that needs to be met and I believe it's six inches in diameter and it's an and clause, so six inches in diameter and it has to be leaning at thirty degree angle, has to be completely down, has to have a split canopy. So as long as it meets both of those are criteria, then they're FEMA eligible. If they're, let's say they're just bent out of shape or a couple limbs are breaking down, maybe they just don't look cosmetically great, then those are the ones that aren't eligible that we'll need to make a decision. Maybe they're down and they're just too small. Do we want to go ahead and, you know, cut them out and remove them and pay for those costs or do we want to leave them there? Those are the questions, those are the ones that we need to make a decision on.
Who, who's doing the documentation on this?
We are internally, I'm out there, Mike's out there and Bob Bumfield, we're going out and painting each tree.
You are out there painting?
Well, we're, we're supervising. Bob mostly is doing out there, going out there and doing all the painting and, and keeping track and measuring each tree.
So we have approximately a hundred trees out there? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. We haven't got, I haven't got that number yet.
Roughly thirty days into the process?
The front nine, the back nine of Deer had about seventy-five trees that were removals. The other, you know, twenty were trims and just touch-ups. So there were seventy that were eligible and then eleven that were ineligible. But that was just the back nine of Deer. We have not done the assessment on Turtle Run or the front nine of Deer.
Mark, what we want to do is we want to open up the course. So what we're talking about, most of the trees are in the scrub jay area and the areas that we've cleaned in the past. And we have a lot of trees that are bent over, I'm sure you've been out there, we have a lot of trees that are bent over, bent over in some people's yards. So those are the ones we're looking at right now.
Well, they're in somebody's yard?
Well, I'm thinking-
That's not covered by the district.
No, 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 but if they're in bent over that way, we've got a lot of calls on that, that are on the golf course, that people are in fear of falling over. So we're, so we're looking at all that.
I'm not trying to minimize the amount of work that it requires, I'm just trying to understand why it's kind of taken so long to measure these trees?
Well, we only have so many people, you know, where, you know, I mean, we own so much staff to do this, which you've got to understand. Plus, we also are also doing the roads, the clubhouse everywhere, you know, we own so much staff, we're trying to, believe me, these guys are working Saturdays all day and everything. So it's not like anybody's, you know, not doing their job.
No, I didn't say, I wasn't implying.
No, I understand that, but I just want to make-
You know, a couple trees a day, you'd have sixty trees and, you know, counted for thirty days.
Well, cutting the trees and we also got to cut them, we have to move them, we have to bring them to certain areas. So, you know, it's just not a tree.
Yeah, I think we got a late start on as well. We, we knew the back nine of Deer was, you know, imminent, we needed to get it done so we can open up the course. We felt that Turtle wasn't as bad until we really cleaned everything up and got out there and then started looking at and addressing the scrub jay habitat and seeing there's a lot more damage than we really assessed to begin with. So just timeframe and prioritizing the projects is, is taking a little bit longer than we would have just gone out there and done it. But once again, it's a FEMA occurrence, it's a hurricane occurrence, it's not something that we do all data basis. So it took us some time to know what the requirements were, get someone trained to go out there and measure, take a picture of each tree and meet all the FEMA requirements and documentation. So it's been, it's been a learning curve for sure.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the explanation. Tanya?
Yes.
Tanya, before you go further, I have two comments. One is that I don't really see a lot of reason, if you're deep in the scrub jay habitat where golfers aren't going to get hurt, why would you bother to take the trees out? I mean, that's kind of part of what scrub jays like. So that's number one. There's places that you should go here and there's places that you probably shouldn't. I'm sure you're aware of that. But the second thing is that we got a lot of trees that we paid a lot of money for several years ago, those live oaks that are blown over, that we really need to get set back up. And if we don't do it in a timely manner, they're going to die because you get the roots out of the ground, you got a problem. So I don't know if we have, we need to get someone else to look at that. I know you guys are wide open.
We may need to get someone else to take care of that. I, I don't know the answer right offhand.
Yeah, our initial pass-through when we did Deer, we got Crossing and Payne to come out, who's a certified arborist and that helped the process. He could tell us, hey, this tree has no chance, this tree does have a chance, let's wait it out and let's hold off six months and wait. We couldn't make that determination, so we needed someone with his expertise to come in and we might need to go down that road again with Turtle. Well, as far as the scrub jay, we've reached out to a consultant and they've said we can do as much as we want or we can do as little as we want as well. So it's a conducive environment for the scrub jay habitat to leave trees down. Is it cosmetically appealing? Maybe not. Is it good for play? Those are the determinations that the board will have to make once we get our assessment, we can ride the course, go out there, see, you know, how many trees we want to take down, how many we don't.
I was specifically talking about the, the live oaks we planted on Turtle Run several years ago. And there's twenty of those probably blown over with the roots out of the ground. And it's a timing issue. If they stay out of the ground too long, they're going to die no matter what you do.
Andy, I know your staff are out there every day. I think that if there's twenty or so that need to be set upright, either we can, you can hire someone to come in and get them upright for right now. And he's right, I don't want them to die because, you know, those oaks are still very young age.
We'll do, we'll address that, Tanya.
Okay, thank you.
I assume that would be Ramon's group, but whatever. I mean, I just think we need to do it.
I have a few more things. On Wednesday, I attended the debris removal meeting at Highlands County for, for county The debris company, Phillips and Jordan, was hired, you know, contracted by Highlands County to remove all the debris in Highlands County. Phillips and Jordan will be inside Manor Hill on Tuesday morning with, uh, you know, a large truck or multiple trucks with skid steer to start the process in the Manor Hill area. You know, I informed them that the debris from Deer Run will be finished by that point. The areas from Deer Run right now that have the debris is on Edgewater. And you're going to see probably an influx of debris as you enter Manor Hill, I believe. Those are the two bigger areas. I know there's, is there another area I missed that we're, the contractor is removing debris off of, this is the back nine of deer. So, he should be finished, if he's finished today, if the weather's good. If, if he is not, he may, you may see a couple people out on Monday finishing that up. But the debris removal company will be here Tuesday morning to handle the debris on Edgewater and the Manor Hill area. Um, is there?
Right. We're going to start in the center of Manor Hill and work our way out on, uh...
That's what I asked them to do, to at least handle the residents that haven't seen any removal at all. Because they, you know, there's already areas in the district they've been, they've been in the Unit Two area, the Preserve. Uh, you know, we, we've seen the trucks here, but come to find out, you know, we are not our only, we're not zoned by ourselves. And what I mean by that is the way the county laid out the zones within the county, we, our zone also includes Sebring Hills and the northern area of Hammock Road, which also includes Golf Hammock. So, when they say they have trucks in every zone, that doesn't mean it's just Sun and Lake. So, I did get a confirmation of Tuesday morning for them to be back in the district.
Right.
Now, is there any other areas that there, the contractor is putting the debris besides Edgewater, the Manor Hill that...
There were a few areas, there is a empty lot, Danny Lot that used to own. Um, they were putting a lot there because everybody, you know, in Manor Hill has put stuff there. Um, it's an easier way in and out for us. Uh, there's a lot less damage done by the contractor going in that area. That's not owned by the district. It's owned by, and I'm not even sure who owns it. But, uh, for years, contractors have used that area for, uh, leaving their trucks there if they did any work on the golf course, um, or any, uh, debris that we have. So, they are there. Uh, there's a lot of debris and it's everywhere. Um, and it's coming from everywhere. Uh, you know, there could be a couple areas that probably we shouldn't have put it, uh, but while I've been working, we're going, working with them. We're trying to bring it to the shortest area for them to dump because there's a lot less damage on the course, uh, doing it that way. So, and I know Tom has some concerns about where we're putting it. We're trying to put it in the, in the best areas, in the safest areas, uh, for people to travel through. So, that's where we are with that. But the contractor's done a very good job. They're very good to work with. Um, so hopefully, within another week, it'll be over with and there'll be no more discussion on this. Thank you.
And this company, I mean, they've worked here since the hurricane hit. I mean, these people are from out of town, you know, they haven't seen their families. They're working seven days a week. Uh, that the owners of these trucks, I know there's more than 40 that's mobilized in the county. So, yeah, anytime you see them, you can always wave at them, thank them, but they're, they're sacrificing a lot to be here. And, um, and I'm very happy to hear that they will, you know, have some trucks mobilized in here on Tuesday morning.
Thank you. I, I do have a question. Do they pick up the leaves that we bagged or are they just going to pick up the limbs?
It's the limbs. The leaves that are bagged is picked up by the county every other Thursday.
Well, they haven't done it yet. So, do we know when they're going to start doing that?
Uh, as far as I know, that they are, they are, every other Thursday is when they pick up the leaves.
They haven't done it.
Okay. Then we, we would need to report it or, or whoever has bagged their leaves should report it to the county.
Does anybody else have a problem?
Um, yes, they have. Um, I don't know why, um, originally, they weren't supposed to put it in bags, but people started to clean their yards real quick. So, they put it in bags. So, we just let them leave it there because there were bags and bags. Some of the areas have been picked up. Uh, my area was picked up. I know your area wasn't, so...
Manor, Manor Hill, again, was not picked up.
That's the Highlands County, uh, as far as the, the garbage waste collection and removal. That's not the same company. The debris removal company is Phillips and Jordan.
Right.
So, yeah, anytime they miss...
The, the other problem we had is people were also putting, um, drywall out and, uh, you know, anything that got ruined, um, and they didn't pick that up. The district has picked a lot of it up themselves, which actually have been the roads guys, you know. So, we are trying to keep everything clean. It's just so much right now, uh, you know, it's a huge, huge job.
So, they're going to do an event? I'm sorry. Eventually, they will do it then. Are we going to, is there anything we can do to speed it up?
Residents are encouraged to call the county. We have, Tenille has those numbers. Uh, it's also, it's posted on their website. Anytime they miss a collection, it should be reported by the residents, yes.
Okay.
Or a street, you know, whatever we do find. The, uh, the road north of the Florida Hospital called Arvita Road, it washed out during the hurricane. We have received, uh, three quotes and we're moving forward with getting that road fixed. We have two bids that are advertised currently. Uh, request for proposal 17 dash 07 is the Toro Osmic hydraulic satellite irrigation upgrade. The bid opening for this will be October 17th at 2:00. The second bid we have out currently is the water treatment plant instrumentation control system upgrades. The bid opening is October 31st at 2:00. That completes my report.
Thank you. New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Tom Costi. Um, back to the Manor Hill issue. Two or three years ago, when the golf course, uh, golf course debris was, uh, being taken off the golf course, instructions were given to send it out to the area where, uh, the district has been, been paying property taxes for an accumulation of 70 or 80 lots that were initially intended for the location of a new sewage treatment plant. It's just west of Cortez, just south of Granada, and that's where the dumping was taking place. Somebody made a decision that rather than taking it out there and putting it all in one pile, the debris from Deer Run is being dumped in Manor Hill in front of Peoples and next to Peoples homes. Now, I don't know how much of what's dumped in, has been dumped in Manor Hill is from the golf course. It's possible that some of the stand, the regular landscape people, seeing those piles there, are dumping their own stuff there too. Uh, the issue is this, those swales are part of the drainage system in Manor Hill. They've all been constructed at a particular elevation. The drainage structures and the piping that takes place from one structure to another is all, uh, part of a system to deflect stormwater to the lowest elevation in Manor Hill, which happens to be that pond next to the green on number 14 on deer. That, that, that is about six feet lower in elevation, maybe even more than that, than the High Point, which happens to be, the High Point happens to, Manor Hill, happens to be the corner of Manor and Manor. That's at 164 feet elevation. And I believe that the pond elevation on, on Deer Run number 14 is about 154. So, it's about a 10-foot fall. And all of those swales were, not only, the elevations were set by Polston Engineering, um, the construction drawings were drawn by Polston, they're signed by Polston and Gator. Uh, they were turned over to the district after being inspected by Polston. And that was by design when, at least when Randall did Manor and Island, uh, he hired Polston to do his construction drawings and to approve the construction as it was, as it was placed. So, um, and what we've got is, we still have water laying. We still have flooded structures on that corner of Manor and Manor. And we're five weeks after the storm. There's still piles of storm debris covering the swales and covering the drainage structure grates.
That's three minutes.
And, um, it's a, it's a, it's a health issue. For me personally, many of you know, my wife has been going through chemo and radiation for the past six months. She's had her immune system completely destroyed and she's been told to stay away from any place where bacteria and disease could be settling. Well, we've still got standing water in that area on Manor and Manor. The drainage system in Manor Hill has been interrupted and it's a district responsibility. I understand about all the golf course, I understand about the contractors and FEMA and all the rest of that. But the district policy manual says that Sun and Lake Improvement District is responsible for drainage and will do whatever is necessary. SWFMA says that the responsible party for drainage in Manor Hill and drainage maintenance in Manor Hill is Sun and Lake Improvement District. I find it just unbelievable that anybody on district staff or district management would instruct a contractor who's removing debris from a golf course to dump it in expedient spots in Manor Hill. But that's what one of the drivers said the other day. Again, I don't know that it's all just those people, but I will say this also. I had a couple of trees go down at my place. It cost me $80 to have it cut up and removed. And that, I did that the day after the storm. And it was done by a landscape contractor that lives right here in Sun and Lake. And he's one of a number, there's several that live here. It would have been a very easy thing for the district to coordinate or even invite some of these guys to come in and put, go around and, and repair some kind of a quote to clean this up. But it's still laying there. The other, I'll, I'll end this now. I just, I just would like to know what the logic was to dump that stuff in Manor Hill instead of out where it was being dumped just west of Cortez and Granada. The other question I have is what about, what about mosquito? I've been told that there's dunks, mosquito dunks available from the county. But the district is also responsible for mosquito control. Has that been ongoing over the last five weeks?
Yeah, it has been. If there is no, Monday and Wednesday evenings is when we spray the district for mosquitoes, yes, sir.
Is the district putting any dunks in those standing water areas?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Bill Nockruss, resident. Just a quick question on, uh, for the general public who probably is very concerned about the cost factor of the cleanup there. Has there any been, or has there any consideration for a special assessment that was talked about before or just after the hurricane? It hasn't been mentioned, I hope it's not, but special assessment for cleanup?
I made a comment about initially, early on, prior to the, um, the hurricane itself. And I also brought it up at a later date, but it appears in talking with various management people, that's not going to be anything necessary and we certainly have the funding to do it. Am I correct?
Correct, yes.
Well, that's understandable and, and homeowners would probably be happy about that. And, uh, what is, the general cost of this cleanup? Have you got any kind of estimate for that? And is FEMA, whether 90% or 80% or...
75%.
75%. So, if it's, if it costs 200,000 bucks, we're doing all right then? Maybe.
Bill, the, the debris company, Phillips and Jordan, is contracted by the county. The county is paying the bill, not the district.
Oh, I see.
Okay. We contracted the company, the tree company that's currently removing the debris on Deer Run. So, that, that is the 75% that Omar's speaking of.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I was just concerned for the homeowners that don't attend these meetings here, that do follow it, uh, how it's being conducted.
County's paying the bill.
That's very good. Thank you.
Chuck Raffetti, resident. I'd just like to take this opportunity to express my thanks to the members of the board, to Mike Curley and the district, uh, for their support and, uh, attention that they've given to the flooding problem that I have in front of my place, as well as the two houses on each side of me. And that's at 6011, 6023 and 6035 Columbus Avenue Boulevard. I guess you came down, most of you, or all of you did, my request and I thank you for that. And that was to look into the seriousness of the problem that I have down there, which is just now starting to abate a little bit, praying it doesn't rain anymore. But it's been a serious problem over a number of many years. Uh, it's whenever we get heavy and continued rains, it just builds up and collects and doesn't seem to want to drain. So, I would request also that the supervisors offer their support and, uh, any help you can give, any assistance that you could give to the district as they, as I understand, are going to attempt to move forward to, uh, assess and correct the drainage problem. So, with that, I thank you very much. Mike, thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Shirley Schuman-Alegre, I'm that resident. Um, I wanted to follow up on a couple of their comments. If I were a general observer, I would say probably 50% of our meeting was dedicated to golf. I'm really concerned about the drainage issues. You know, I know that there's a plan. I know that Mike has been working. I know we have some things out there, but I think it would be really helpful for the residents of the district just to be able to see and understand what's going on with some of the drainage problems. It also has an impact on the majority of the constituency. So, I just wanted to make that as a general comment. I do thank, um, all of the people who are working, obviously, you going out and measuring trees, um, you know, we're absorbing this through, you know, the traditional man, um, hours that we have. And I think that that's quite a statement to the staff. Thank you.
Bill Jackson, resident, Unit Five. I've sat here and listened to, uh, several units being talked about, uh, Manor Hill and other, other areas, the golf course and all that. Well, I live in an older unit. And nowhere in this conversation have I had anything being done in Unit Five. I did as some of these other people have done. I paid to have all my stuff, some trees cut down and stuff. I paid for that myself because I didn't want to wait till it get done. I just didn't have that kind of patience. So, it'd be nice if once in a while, a thought is given to Unit Five. I would appreciate that personally. But so far, uh, it's just, it's the closest one to the gate up here, but I would appreciate that being mentioned and something being done over there. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Can I answer that question for, for Bill? We just put three manholes in Unit Five in the last two or three weeks that collapsed. We have dedicated a lot of time to the holes on Sun and Lake and we're trying to be everywhere. Obviously, uh, there was a lot of damage done from the storm, uh, and we are addressing everywhere in Sun and Lake. Now, and Tom, Tom's coming. Tom is absolutely right about the drainage, but, uh, most of the debris was put in, um, that area by contractors, not from, not that we hired at Sun and Lake, it was, um, and homeowners. We are working on that, to clean those areas up, um, you know, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have it all done. But Tom is right, the drainage area is, is a problem there. Uh, right now, we're working on it. Drew and I have been out there probably two or three times in the last couple of weeks. Um, and we are going to come up with a plan. And, and for Chuck's area, he's absolutely right. But hopefully, we'll come up with a plan to help him out. Um, he's been living this, I think, '06. He told us yesterday, Tanya and I... He's been living this, I think, oh-six, he told us yesterday, Tanya and I met with him yesterday for about an hour, and we are working at it with him too also, so. But we are, through the whole area of Sunna Lakes, we're working on the whole Sunna Lakes, not just one area. So just so, just so everybody in this room understands that, we're trying to address everywhere. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Further public comment? Discussion two and from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple of things I just want to bring up. I understand we got a response from, is it Coach or Cox or, on the construction of the maintenance facility?
Yo Cook, yes. Uh-huh, we received a Gantt chart.
So I'd like to propose that we come up, we have a new date now, I think it's December ninth, the finishing date. I think we ought to come up with a resolution that if they don't complete it by that date, that we go back and start charging them the two hundred dollars a day going forward, and this one is not to be changed. We just, that's it.
Can I confirm that date with Drew? Drew?
If I read, if I read it right, I think it's December ninth.
Okay, I don't have the chart in front of me. So, tenth or the ninth, okay.
All right. How do you guys feel about that?
Ray, Ray, can I just say something on that? I know that they have had problems with Duke because of the storm, so I just want you to be aware of that.
But they gave us, they gave us this.
Right, I understand that, you know.
I think they're out of excuses.
Okay, well, anyways, I just want to make sure you understand that Duke has held them up, so, okay?
Well, I just received this a couple of days ago, so it must be pretty new.
Well, I met with them yesterday, we've been meeting with them almost daily now, and Duke is holding them up right now. So I don't know how, you know, how far back they will, but I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Mike, I got to tell you, based on the last meeting, for them to come up and give us the information we asked for, when they couldn't commit last time, now they're committing, and I just think we take it, and they can't, deadline, they don't make it, we charge them.
Okay.
We are expecting a change order from Cook with a new time extension, is that correct? So if the date is December ninth, the proposal is that we, we pursue, you know, penalties after that date. So we don't have that change order yet, do we, Omar? Okay. So as soon as we do, we'll, we'll get it on the agenda for the board.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to bring up, if I can, is let's talk about five-year plan, capital plans. My favorite subject. I reviewed the five-year plan that Tanya gave to me, and it's a good starting point. One is, obviously, we have to take away the current year that we're in, and obviously, we have to add another year to make it five years. But I think, what I'd like to see done, if we can do this, is have a summary sheet, but have supporting documents to go with it, and then publish it on our website where everybody can find it, so everybody knows what's going on. And obviously, it's a moving target because it's five years, but I think if we can do that, put it on the website, I think we would take a major step in trying to keep everybody informed on, on what our expenditures, what we expect our expenditures to be over the next five years. My recommendation would be to give everybody, perhaps till January, to come up with supporting documents and numbers for the next five years, and then have a workshop in January, hopefully get it approved in February, and publish it, which would be in time for budget discussions, which I guess start in March. Is that correct, March or April?
Usually April or May. Yeah, March is a little preliminary.
Okay. But I'd still like to see this get done, and that would be the timing that I would recommend. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Further board comment? No? No? Kind of, just piggyback on one thing that Ray said. It's true that, I know that these documents, a lot of our documents are online for people to take a look at, you know, they have to go to the website, they have to maneuver through it. I think that what he's saying about a, a plan, a capital plan, we all see it, it's all in the budget, people can research it. But it would be nice if there was an easy place where they could go directly to it, which kind of leads me into the next thing. And I've had, see, we've all had these discussions, but unfortunately, a lot of the public has and have been, you know, involved in them. I'm doing this on behalf of Mike Gilpin, the president, and he wanted to know, in his question, Colin X says, we're spending three hundred thousand dollars on drainage this year. He wants to know, I know he knows, but he wants the public to know where it's going, okay? Can somebody address that, Michael?
First up, provided the board the summary sheet with all the, the projects. Polston Engineering has finalized their report that backs up that summary sheet with all their maps. I have it, I have not reviewed it, that's why I have not printed it, and I had expected, you know, to have that today, so that's, you know, it's not Drew's fault, it's my fault, I'd like to be able to review that first. The, we had an initial meeting internally about drainage, and of those projects on that sheet, we have, I don't have it in front of me today, but we have several of those that are going to be put out for bid, okay? And the major, the major ones on that list. Do either of y'all have that list with you today?
I do.
Okay. So internally, we are going to be cleaning some culverts and some swales. Additionally, the projects on that sheet, you know, we, we determine which ones we are going to put out for bid, which ones we need a quotes, and, you know, further discussions are going to have to happen as far as culverts and swales. We have an, an assessment of all of our residential culverts in the district, and that assessment includes how clogged, you know, those culverts are, and it'll be up to us to determine, you know, and of course, Unit 2 is the area that is the worst. So it'll be up to staff to determine where we start with these culverts. So we're, we're still, we haven't had a chance to sit down and, and look at that, but that's, that's where we stand. I would expect the bid to be out maybe December, January, we just don't, we don't know. I know that Polston Engineering will have to work, you know, to put together some specifications for the bid.
Appreciate that. Like I said, we're, we've seen this, even though it isn't finally approved, I, I think it's more for the benefit of people like Shirley, you know, Bill, Tom, and so on. They don't necessarily know where this, the three hundred thousand dollars that we're expending is going. In the past, last year, we went through a ranking of the projects, the board went through it, they kind of looked at it and said, okay, this is what we feel would be appropriate, and then we went to Polston Engineering, and we said, give us some guidance as to whether we're going in the right direction. I mean, you, you're the experts, let us know where the, the worst places are.
That's right.
And the list that we have here, which is going out to bid, I'm not so sure, and I'm, I'm not an engineer, and we've had some of these discussions already, I'm not so sure that this, the priority list here is necessarily the best. But, you know, there's a number of other people. So I think that there should be some discussion on this before we go out for bid. If we're going out to bid just for estimates, that's one thing, but if we're looking to award the bids, then I think we need to look at this a little more. And I know that in the past, they said, once we get the bid, because we're going into certain seasons, they say we have to do the work right away, so it kind of gets, you know, pushed through because of weather and things of that nature.
Well, that, that is the priority list, one through, is that one through six?
This is the one, yeah, one through five.
One through five.
Mm-hmm. Martin?
Excuse me, Tanya. Some of that, on that list there, is continue from where we left off from last year. Okay, so we want to continue, from where we left from last year, to continue, so, so once we start area, we finish one area. You know, we're not jumping from one job to another, and some of that, and if you want to take a ride with me any day, I'll, I'll explain that to you. But I will say one thing, I did get a call yesterday from somebody from Sunrise that did not want the drainage done in their area, and she actually said to me, it was the best thing that she's seen done here at Sunna Lake in years, so, and, and that's, you know, thank the board for that, she said, because she had no water in her front yard for the first time in years. But that was one area we started on, so.
Nobody, nobody, Michael, nobody, I, I'm not, anyway, I'll speak for myself, nobody's disputing the great work that was done, nobody's disputing what was done in Calcatavera or whatever, and Sunrise and all of those projects.
That's what it was.
What I am saying is, and I have, quite frankly, and I've been with you, gone to many of these locations, okay, and taken the ride. I'm just saying, maybe we should just revisit this. You say it's a continuation, it is a continuation of the same basic area, but there are some other, maybe higher priority areas now. I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Right, I understand it, and I agree. So I, I do agree.
And it's more important that the people know, you know, so they can look at the schedule, and they can say, oh, my area's going to be done. That's all I'm saying, but I appreciate it.
Now, we can change those priorities, but the budget is three hundred thousand. I mean, and the way we have the priorities is, number one, we have the rear lot ditch cleaning for the Metansus, Granada, Nada Streets. That's number one. That is going to be part of the bid. If the board does not want that part of the bid, then we would have to push it to next year. Because these are, these are areas that where we already have the specifications done, is that correct, Drew? I mean, Drew has done the specs, we can move forward with the project so that the project will be able to start and finish in the dry season.
That's right. He said that, that number one is only a hundred and twenty thousand out of the three hundred thousand that's allocated.
Correct, that's number one.
So we would still have a hundred and eighty thousand left that Mark's saying, maybe we should look at and reprioritize.
Well, the other, the other part of that bid would be to fix Minorca Street. We have about twenty-five thousand budgeted, is that correct, Mark, on that sheet?
Yes.
To fix the inlets on Minorca. There's a lot of flooding that occurs, especially last year as well, and we want to fix those inlets, and the flooding occurs on the road on Minorca. So that was on our priority list. That would be part of the bid. And I believe there's one more, and I think that was the twin culvert failure on Balboa.
Balboa and Columbus intersection.
So this, I'm going to go back to our meeting that we had the other day, Michael, Drew, and you. All I'm saying is, we have these things listed as one through five, I brought up item Unit 14, and you, and that was scheduled for next year. At least, that's what I thought we said. But now that's kind of just moved maybe into a higher priority. Is that a true statement or not?
Are you talking about Balboa and Columbus?
Yes.
Well, the road's blocked out due to the hurricane. We weren't going to do it this year, but since it blew out the road, we kind of got...
I'm just saying, I had a, yeah.
What we're going to do...
I had a meeting at eight-thirty on Wednesday, I remember, that's very cool.
What we're going to do on Columbus is we're going to get a topo, so we can understand the, the level of that road before we recommend any, any project. And the board can certainly, you know, if we decide that a cleaning the swales on the north end of Columbus is, is going to be viable for that street, we certainly try to get some quotes to understand how much that's going to cost. That is not part of that three hundred thousand, you are correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I'm, actually, this was an extension of Michael's. He takes all the blame for it.
This is good discussion. I mean, it's, you know, the drainage right now with the hurricane, I mean, we received anywhere from fourteen to eighteen inches, you know, within a twenty-four to forty-eight hour period, so, something we never anticipated, so.
I, I understand fully, I understand fully. Any, Joe?
This is another Mike question. Code enforcement. I've kind of watched what goes on. I hear a lot of comments from residents, and, and the questions are really around the enforcement piece. I don't think there's any understanding publicly of what happens when somebody is cited for a code violation and they don't react. Obviously, the most visible one is trash cans, and I know that's been dealt with on, on the first step. So I guess help us understand what the next steps are in terms of, what, what are the steps, what's the timing?
All right, what we do is we cite them. They have twenty-one days, well, they have twenty-one days to fix it. I mean, I think you're talking about the trash cans that are outside, right? We take them to a hearing. Once we take them to a hearing, they have to come to a hearing, we have a hearing officer that will make a decision. They can be fined. I mean, we have a lot of fines out there, takes a long time, I mean, so we'll fine them, and then they put a lien, if they don't pay to fine, we, they put a lien on, on their homes. And then we have to wait, there's a certain amount of time, how long it takes to get it, but if someone owns a house for twenty years, you're probably not going to get it. You know, you know, but we have to go through, we have to cite them, give them so much time to reply, and then we take them to a hearing.
And that all takes approximately a month, two months, three months?
About two months.
Okay.
You know, because we got to give them the twenty-one days, and then we have to, and, and then we send another letter about the hearing. Now, our hearings, I think we, it's every two or three months, depending on how many hearings we have coming up. So, and it's actually a hearing officer that we hire here from the district that, that will make decisions, and then they'll send them a letter.
Okay, magistrate?
Yes.
We have issued citations for garbage cans. The code enforcement reports, along with all the other staff reports, are posted online for all of you to, to review. I know some of you are new, and I, I probably hadn't said that yet, but they are there, so that tells you how many citations. But have every, has everyone complied with the citations we've issued on the garbage cans?
No.
No, okay.
No, no. But the one thing we have...
I'm sorry, it's warning notices. I apologize.
Right, they're warning notices. But we have stepped, stepped back in the last months since the storm, because people have so much out there, and we did send a couple out, and people actually came in and offered and complained, you know, give us a break. So we have stepped back and, and been real lax over the last month and a half or two months, because, you know, I mean, the storm did a lot of damage, so. You probably haven't seen many, many citations in the last month or two, but you'll start seeing them again.
And I think we understand that this is an extraordinary time. I, I just was very curious as to what the next steps were and the timing is.
A lot of problems we have are, say, like trash, like people that rent, the end of the month, sometimes you'll be riding down the road, and you'll see a whole house out there, and they just throw them out. Well, the people that move out their last day, they dump everything out in the front yard. We, usually what we've been doing is, I'll send two or three guys and go clean it up, because we can't leave it there for a week or two, so we pick a lot of the stuff up ourselves and, and bring it to a dumpster. I like doing it because it's labor and it's time, but I can't leave a whole front yard full of bureaus and beds and mattresses, so, you know, we do address a lot in-house ourselves.
Okay, that helps. I think there's a...
Can we take a public comment now? Some additional public comment based on his...
It's up to the chairman.
Do you have a question, Bill?
Yeah.
Bill Jackson, on these garbage cans, they give them twenty-one days to correct it? A guy can't just walk out there and put his garbage can behind the house or in the garage? We give them twenty-one days, and then we go through all this process? You need to make some changes in that. If a guy can't pick his garbage can up and haul it to someplace for it's not violating the rules while you're sitting there, what's...
We have to go by the rules, Bill. I mean, I agree with you, I, it's very frustrating to us too, but we still have to go by the law.
Well, then it's, it's a pitiful thing when you get garbage cans, that you can't just, hey, this, this is violating the rule, it has to be in the garage or around back. It's a pitiful thing when you give them twenty-one days to pick their garbage can up and move it around back and go to file all these complaints. If you want to make some changes, make some changes in that. We had these garbage cans put upon us by the county, and now I go drive, I drive down the street, I can walk around in my house, and I can see thirty-three to thirty-four complaints about those garbage cans just being left out. And I don't blame them for not doing anything. If it's going to take twenty-one days just to comply with it, it's not worth doing. So I would suggest whatever you have to do to change that... So I would suggest, whatever you have to do to change that, because there are some things that don't take a month to do, and picking up a garbage can is one of them. Thank you.
You're welcome. This was actually not a general public comment, but go ahead.
Well, I just, I just want to tack on to that, and I know many of you drive down Minorca, and I'm a little disappointed that the county, and I believe it's the county, hasn't picked up, if you look at that one house, that two-story one, that stuff has been laying out there since two or three days after Irma hit. And those, I guess, the stuffing and stuff under the carpeting, and it might be carpeting too.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, I just wonder why they haven't taken the time to pick that up. So is that a county problem, or is that our problem?
It's county.
Well, it's a county problem, but, you know, they just haven't picked up, I don't know. And, and a lot of incidents, we will go and pick it up ourselves, and I know Tanya would like to probably shoot me when I go do it a lot of times, because it takes, it takes time, but it, it, you know, sometimes you have to go and pick it up ourselves.
I've seen you do it, Michael, Granada, or a bunch of times.
Right, you know.
When somebody moves out, like you said, they, and they just...
I mean, one time we had seven mattresses. I mean, how can you leave seven mattresses out there and, and then have Bill come and look at a house to buy in that area? He's not going to buy a house, you know, so that's why we do it.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Shirley.
Shirley Schuman-Alegre, I'm resident. My only question is, it's always tough making rules, because then you got to enforce them. I mean, we've heard that for many, many years. What kind of costs are incurred by the district to be able to enforce the garbage can pickup? In other words, do we have the magistrate, the court cost, the lien cost? Just, I mean, get an idea of what our return is on for money.
We have all of that. Yes.
Any further discussion?
Are we doing the budget or not? Wait a minute, are we exactly doing the budget? The five-year plan? I want an answer. Don't look at me like that. I'd like to know, is the board in supporting this five-year capital plan, so we can have a workshop in January? You guys got any interest in doing that?
I certainly have an interest in it.
Very much so.
So can we make that a...
I think it's critical.
Yes, I mean...
You have to tell me, what's the next step to do it?
Well, internally, we, we're going to get together the documentation, and then I will talk with you if January is going to be the best time. That's kind of what we had, you know, discussed, that we need a little time to put all together, you know, put together the documentation. So, of course, a, a special workshop on five-year capital, whenever the board wants to entertain that, that'll be fine.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Tanya. No further comment? Meeting's adjourned.